Today's date is September 30th, 2021. Director Bless, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I am going to go ahead and have Ashley begin to share her screen. So that we can go ahead and get started. I see that Commissioner Hardisty is also joined, so I think everyone is here. So, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I am Kathy Bless, the Chief Human Resource Officer for the city. And I'm grateful for the opportunity today to discuss my bureau. And to share with you the importance of investing in the work we do as you begin to consider the fall bump. And then next, the next fiscal year's budget. We have a lot to discuss in our time this afternoon. And I will certainly get right down to our asks in just a couple of minutes. But this work session is also important to ask you for your support and feedback on priorities we see in the short term. Seek your alignment on goals we have developed within each team and BHR. And lastly, we will spend time talking about the required pay equity analysis and answer any additional questions that you may have. As it relates to employee pay and cost. You will hear from other presenters today as well. Tiffany Penson, our People and Culture Strategist. Joel Michaels, our Occupational Health and Wellbeing, or Occupational and Wellbeing Manager. Tracy Warren, our Classification Compensation and Pay Equity Manager. And Anne Milligan, Deputy City Attorney, will all be sharing information with you today. Additionally, Deputy Chief Human Resource Officer Ashley Grandy. Employee and Labor Relations Manager Ron Zito. City Budget Director Jessica Kennard and Chief Administrative Officer Tom Reinhardt are included at our virtual table. And available to offer additional perspective or assistance in answering any questions that you may have along the way. So why are we here today? Well, I'm in the midst of my 27th year at the city. And I am, and I am still here because I feel a sense of purpose. It has been and continues to be a privilege to serve this city, its community, and most certainly its employees. I value and respect the dignity of each employee and have supported and advocated for a culture of health. Within the workplace and the workforce. As the Health and Financial Benefits Manager, as Deputy Director, and now as Director of BHR. I say all of this to share that now is the most pivotal time I have witnessed in all my years of service. Our presentation is not just about what is right today. But ensures we are ready to meet the moments ahead with a workforce and a workplace that is changing. And in fact, we don't yet know all the ways we will need to adapt and change with it in the years ahead. I have been asked in preparation for this work session, what is the problem that we're trying to solve? And so the answer is really threefold. First, within BHR, we have an enormous amount of work we are responsible for each day. We can't keep up or do anything new or innovative or important because we don't have enough staff. I am worried about the staff I have and their capacity to continue to work and function under the stress of all the new and existing work that BHR is responsible to do and to implement. Second, we are trying to solve for how to safeguard the city's internal infrastructure, its employees. In their ability to heal, feel valued, be safe, be accountable, continue resiliency, grow, develop. And tell others the city of Portland is a great place to work. And lastly, the city's 7,000 plus employees are vital to the city of Portland's wellbeing. And instrumental in shaping its future. If we want to serve our community well, then we need consistent strategic investment. To understand all the whys, it's also important to understand who we are. And BHR has a longstanding history of diverse representation. In January of 2021, 76% of city employees identified as white, and this is citywide statistics. 1.3% identified as Native American. 3.5% is Asian, 7% is Black. 1.3% as Latino or Latinx. And 4.2% were two or more races. As demonstrated in the demographics chart on this slide, BHR exceeds the representation of our workforce. Which is a value we will continue to demonstrate as we continue to add to the BHR workforce. We will strive to continue the recruitment and retention of people who are reflective of the fullest definition of diversity. We value and celebrate the intersectional identities of our team and the way in which the lived experience. Person contributes to the greater outcomes for the city. So just to provide a bit more context within BHR. In the past 10 years, the most staff BHR has had at any one time is 88 people, and that was in fiscal year 2017. We have hovered around our current staffing levels or below since 2009. Data tells us that optimal staffing ratios are much higher than our current staffing. And to have a fully staffed Human Resources Bureau would take a number of years to plan for such a large swing in personnel. But we have immediate needs to discuss with you today. And additional context also with regard to the staffing ratio is available in some of the documents that we sent in the briefing packet to you last Friday. Certainly, as I mentioned on the earlier slide, BHR has a significant amount of work and not enough staff. We are seeing increased volume and classification requests in the first quarter of the new fiscal year. That exceeds the typical volume for an entire year. We know of at least 200 requests now. This is on top of legal requirements related to pay equity, the day-to-day work of class comp, and improvements needed within the program itself.
Excuse me, can I ask a point of order question?
Of course.
Um, I feel like I'm being lobbied at. I thought this is a work session to talk about actually what's going on in human resources. And I feel like this is a lobbying session. So did I miss, did I get the wrong information? Is this here to talk about lobbying for the fall bump? Or is this a work session to really talk about the work of human resources?
Um, it's, Commissioner, thank you for, for your question, Commissioner Hardisty. It is a question of resources for the fall bump. And it also is an opportunity to discuss the priorities of the Bureau of Human Resources.
So I'm less interested in what your priorities are now for the fall bump and more interested in the strategic direction the Bureau is headed in. And I feel like I'm just being lobbied at. So just want you to know how this is coming across. This is not coming across as a work session where we're sharing information. It's coming across as a lobbying session.
Okay, thank you for your feedback. I'll pick up and continue. Hopefully, Commissioner Hardisty, the, the information presented will, will hold together and meet your needs moving forward. Certainly, the position cuts BHR were required to take last fiscal year were taken within recruitment because two individuals retired. In addition to an existing vacancy as a result of an internal promotion. This saved us from cutting other positions impacting BHR staff and their families with layoffs. Additionally, as the Police Bureau cut its budget and its recruitment team, all functions related to police officer recruiting shifted to BHR. Adding recruiters in the fall bump would only be the beginning and simply ensure baseline service delivery. Our goal is to extend beyond baseline service and implement a full cycle and classification-based recruitment model. To improve the candidate and stakeholder experience as well as more intentional support through selection and hiring outcomes. Our goal will be to ensure newly hired recruiters are reflective of the diverse community we are and that we are becoming. Our employee relations team has responded to changes through the pandemic, through the pandemic, and are often the staff on the front line answering any and all questions related to rules. Policy, process, or practices of HR. The team does this work while also managing workplace complaints, investigations, and discipline. We have an opportunity to improve the capacity and service of this area through investing in culturally specific HR consultants. Centering race, ethnicity, people with disabilities, and the LGBTQIA+ community within our workforce. These roles will bring cultural humility, lived experience, and responsiveness to sensitive topics, ensuring dignity and respect for all parties. They will serve as a bridge between Equity Managers, the Office of Equity and Human Rights, and BHR. The operations team has been working significant overtime, which cannot be fully quantified due to their FLSA exempt status. Any changes to labor agreements, personnel actions, including hiring, offboarding, transfers, pay changes are processed by this team. Having HR generalist help is crucial to ensure we can shift as the new work comes in. We believe adding a mental health professional within BHR is crucial to supporting the city's infrastructure. The individual in this role would assess the current state of our workforce and development treatment plan for our internal workforce facilitating healing, wellness, and engagement. And Joel Michaels will speak more to this shortly. And while a training budget will maybe more appropriate to discuss at the next, as the next budget is developed. It is also part of the goals and priorities we spoke about with you prior to this work session. And it's important to keep this priority on top, on top of the pile. A training budget would provide opportunity for further investment in manager supervisor accountability, trainers, and curriculum. As well as begin to increase opportunity for on-demand training or professional development for staff at each level of the organization. The training budget would also be a way to coordinate and deploy training that centers our city core values. And a centralized budget allows for all employees to access training that is specific to the city, ensuring equitable offerings and opportunity. It would not be for bureaus' specific certifications or safety trainings that may be required within larger bureaus. So this slide represents the actual ask in terms of positions and fall bump asks from council. For one-time funding through the end of the current fiscal year. Understanding the police recruiter positions, likely all positions would need to be reassessed and be part of the ongoing funding conversations within council for next fiscal year budget. These include four recruiter positions, two position-specific recruiter positions specific to police. Three additional classification compensation operation staff to address the 200-plus new positions. And the Mental Health Program Manager. Estimated costing for the remainder of the planned year for these positions would be an initial estimate of $1.2 million. We are working to fill other positions related to the vaccine mandate. But those are being funded outside of the general fund through other pandemic funds. And one recruiter position is funded through a parks inter-agency agreement.
Can I jump in with a quick question?
Absolutely.
So, um, when you talk about proposed fall budget, are we talking the bump here? Are we talking the next fiscal year?
So we are talking about the bump.
Okay. And can you, what does the Mental Health Program Manager do?
So Joel has an entire section on that if you wanna, if.
I can hold off, I'll wait for Joel's presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Equipping BHR to conduct a systemic, these are like future considerations. So the last slide was really about the current budget asks, but certainly for future consideration, we have other things. That we want to be able to, to talk about so that you can see the connection with future goals. And it's also to be transparent on how we hope to live into our work moving forward. Equipping BHR to conduct a systemic approach to a positive employee experience, whether a person is engaging with us as a potential candidate for a job. Or a current employee awaiting an update regarding a pay rate for promotion. A person awaiting a status change to reflect their job change in the system. Or an individual who needs benefit information that speaks to their gender identity, or a person hoping to gain skills and better understand their role. As it, as living into our city core values. All of our systems are connected and impact the experience that each and every one of us has at the city. In order to better track engagement citywide, we would. Like to at some future point in time, seek funding to implement a centralized approach to capture employee engagement. Currently, some bureaus conduct employee engagement surveys and exit, exit surveys. However, there isn't a comprehensive way in which to hold and gather that information. Or to hold BHR accountable for the investments we are seeking and to have a more comprehensive view on how our workforce is doing and why people are leaving. We would be seeking those resources to invest in employee engagement technology. And this is, and this is likely an essential partnership with BTS. And, and certainly would be a resource ask for technical implementation. So I am incredibly proud of the work of BHR, and we certainly have room for opportunity, which is why we are before you today. We recognize a need to intentionally guide implementation of city core values to ensure we are not simply words on a page. But demonstrative of behaviors we know are essential to build and maintain the trust of a workforce. With this goal in sight, we created people and culture. This division is now part of BHR, and I will now transition to Tiffany Penson, who will begin our overviews of each work group's goals.
Thank you, Kathy. Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly about the vision of people and culture and furthering the success of workforce recruitment, training, and disability employment. People and Culture is a new team within BHR established to deploy and operationalize the core values of anti-racism, equity, communication, collaboration, transparency. And fiscal responsibility, which were adopted by City Council in 2020. In our people and culture interviews with bureaus, directors unanimously agree that there is an increased need for resources, trainings. And a centralized framework to operationalize the city's core values to help improve and enhance how we treat and serve our people internally. With that being said, it was identified that BHR shall be properly resourced to provide training opportunities for employees and leadership. Provide culturally specific mental health care resources. Provide bureaus with more support with workforce training, hiring, and retention efforts. And increase staff to support workplace culture initiatives with accountability tools such as annual reviews or auditing processes. The goal of People and Culture is to develop and implement a citywide people-centered culture philosophy. Expand the focus outreach recruitment program to increase hires identifying as Black, Indigenous, and people of color. Partner with workforce recruitment and training to enhance the candidate selection process. Enhance the new hire onboarding program with a focus on the employee's first year of hire. Centralize exit interviews and employee engagement surveys. And transition from a five-year to a one-year affirmative action plan. This segues nicely into the importance of having a robust workforce recruitment, training, and disability employment team. As none of these services BHR offers can be successfully obtained without a holistic and people-centered portfolio of services to attract, develop, and retain. A diverse, intelligent workforce. The goal of the workforce recruitment, training, and disability employment team is to. Increase access to professional development and training opportunities to employees. Improve and create a consistent approach to the selection process through full cycle recruitment. Shift to a classification-based recruitment model. Improve self-identification options for race, ethnicity, and gender identities through the application process. And establish and report on hiring benchmarks based on aspirational goals. To build a successful organizational culture philosophy that includes dignity, respect. And establishing a true sense of belonging, we must start with the necessary resources to create a home where our employees are fully supported. To successfully perform the work, attract and retain the most skilled workforce, and ensure our leaders lead with empathy. As we are not the same city as we were prior to the pandemic and the aha moment that racial injustice still exists in the 21st century. We need to ensure that we have an organization that restores the wellbeing of our people by taking care of the whole person. We have an opportunity now to be better than we were before. And as leaders, you are critical as this type of change begins with your voice leading the charge. Thank you. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Joel.
Thanks, Tiffany. Um, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Joel Michaels, the nurse practitioner in the city's Occupational Health and Wellbeing Program Manager. I've been with the city for just over three years. But having known the two other occupational health nurses who preceded me. I'm able to share some historical context and understanding of how this program has evolved and where it still needs to grow. Occupational health and wellbeing services have always been in high demand and short supply here at the city. Before we had our own nurse, we used to have OHSU Occupational Medicine send us a nurse to help manage our needle sticks and deliver OSHA mandated trainings. When OHSU ended that service in 1999, City Risk hired Nurse Laura, who single-handedly delivered services to all bureaus. She was stretched very thin. One person delivering all the bloodborne pathogen services to all bureaus. And the, um, ex-managing exposures like needle sticks, performing lab tests, providing vaccinations, including hepatitis and tetanus. For those at risk for needle sticks. And the seasonal onsite flu shot campaign for all bureaus is a tall order for one person. The Fire Bureau quickly hired their own nurse Janet Woodside, who continues to work full-time managing Portland Fire and Rescue mandated compliance, training, and safety programs. Even with Janet's help, by 2008, Nurse Laura was burned out, and when she left, Nurse Carolyn took over. Carolyn had a Red Cross background, and the program expanded to include an emergency preparedness focus in addition to all of the infectious disease prevention and OSHA compliance work. Wellbeing and health engagement were not part of occupational health until I started with the city. Though both Carolyn and Laura attended employee health fairs and answered the call when a bureau asked for health education. We nurses strongly believe in prevention as the primary way to stay healthy. But the workload for occupational health didn't leave room to include workplace wellness until recently. The benefits team within HR used to help fill this gap with a designated coordinator, coordinator. Who found gym equipment for bureaus to use and partnered with our health plans for wellness and engagement support. And she tapped vendors to get employees access to supportive services and deals on memberships to fitness rooms. Even with benefits coordinating wellness opportunities, both nurses before me found managing occupation, found managing the occupational health workload to be unsustainable. Both were given part-time help occasionally, but without electronic health record software to streamline data entry, scheduling, and tracking of employees. The ball, the volume of work that this job demands took its toll. Neither lasted 10 years in the position. Laura left the city, Carolyn was still working when she passed away from health complications that job stress certainly made worse. I came to the city replacing Carolyn with my background in healthcare delivery that includes primary care and occupational health as a nurse practitioner. And my most recent position at Moda Health, where I led a population health and engagement team dedicated to working with city of Portland employees. Through the Healthy Foundations and City Strong programs, where members leverage lifestyle change to avoid or manage chronic health conditions. And reach personalized wellbeing goals. Since I had already been working with the benefits team, the Occupational Health Program and the City Strong Program, which I brought with me for Moda. Were moved into BHR within benefits. And with the help of Courtney Gilmore, our limited-term wellness coordinator. We've been able to expand occupational health to include workplace wellness opportunities with a special focus on employee mental health. with a special focus on employee mental health with the objective of de-stigmatizing the use of mental health services and prioritizing one's own mental health. Successful engagement strategies include webinars, website resources, newsletters, challenges, and live events such as mindfulness practice, stress management tools, and yoga or stretching offered each week. If you haven't checked out our City Strong wellbeing offerings yet, I hope that you will soon. Looking at the current state of occupational health and wellbeing, it's safe to say that the pandemic and the events over the past 18 months has changed everything. Occupational health has been instrumental in addressing workplace safety during the pandemic, and I continue to address health and safety as we implement the vaccine mandate directive, comply with OSHA COVID regulations, and help manage workplace COVID exposure events. But we have an elephant in the room when it comes to employee health and wellbeing, and B H R and occupational health cannot ignore it. The mental health and the general culture of wellness and safety for our workforce has taken a huge hit this past 18 months. And we will feel the effects from the trauma of all that has occurred for years to come. There is palpable stress in our workforce right now. Work workflows are changed. New work is being asked of many. Doing the same work may feel dangerous for essential onsite workers. Teams are stretched thin with extra work being redistributed due to vacancies or sick leave. And then there's the ongoing presence of racism, prejudice, anti-blackness, and anti-law enforcement bias that so many of our staff must live with, both within and outside the workplace. Healing from lived experience, facing the effects of global warming, coping with political division, trauma, and grief for the loss of normalcy, security, and safety is where occupational health, mental health, and wellbeing must now focus. Our goals are aimed at facilitating and speeding the recovery process through evidence-based program design and expert leadership. We will use a trauma-informed care framework that promotes a safe and accepting workplace where mental health challenges and difficult life experiences are anticipated and considered carefully as we design work and move forward. People-centered wellness opportunities through City Strong will be expanded to reach more work groups and be integrated into existing structures and meetings to improve awareness and improve the city's culture of wellness. Mental health first aid trainings will expand to reach more key staff who are able to prevent, recognize, and intervene when there is a mental health crisis, something supervisors and managers have been asking for, but was only recently piloted with human resources business partners and needs to be scaled up to meet the growing need across all bureaus. Taking a systemic approach to healing, engagement, and wellness will require strong leadership and experience specific to emotional recovery. We are asking for a mental health program manager, such as a social worker, to join occupational health and wellbeing to help design and implement this framework using a scientific approach to assess, diagnose, plan, and treat the city for the psychosocial crisis we are facing as an employer and help us live into our core values within the city workforce. This approach to organizational healing is truly innovative and progressive. And I want to acknowledge and thank Ashley Grundy for her leadership as B D H R Director, since she has helped me and our whole team better understand the workplace wellbeing challenges we are facing and this solution to move us forward. The occupational health services that I provide will stay focused on the pandemic. The OSHA programs I help administer, trainings, exposure management, lab services, vaccination programs, and oversight of City Strong. But I don't want to burn out or get stretched too thin like my two predecessors. So I'm working to find better software to improve efficiency and lower my stress level. With a mental health program manager on board, City Strong and all of B H R programs will gain momentum in finding new ways to influence the culture of healing, wellbeing, and acceptance of others' path to recovery from whatever their life experience has shown them. Whether it's the experience of the past 18 months or growing up in a world with systemic racism and inequity, healing should be found in a safe and supportive workplace that values its staff by proactively finding ways to make things better. I look forward to being part of the solution that leads to a resilient, engaged, and healthy workforce as we implement the Human Resources Strategic Plan in the months to come. Thank you, and I'll turn it back to Kathy now.
I see Commissioner Hardesty, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you Kathy. And thank you Joel. Joel, you caught my attention when you were talking about city employees are struggling with racism, anti-blackness, and anti-law enforcement bias. I've never heard those three used in the same sentence before. Could you articulate what you mean when you say anti-law enforcement bias?
Well, having worked with a lot of law enforcement professionals throughout this last year, I know that they are facing an important amount of stress and stigma for having attended the protests and having to respond when there's social unrest. A lot of them feel like they're caught in the crossfire, both literally and figuratively. And I know it's just a stressful time to to be a police officer.
I appreciate that. It's really a stressful time to be Black in America as well, but it always has been. I guess I'm just, I was just kind of struck by you wanting those three together. Because I would question whether there is anti-law enforcement bias throughout the city of Portland. There may be a segment of the workforce who feels the pressure because the community is demanding that they transform themselves. But that caught my attention, and I just did not want that to pass as if that was a normal sentence. Thank you. And Director, it would really be important for me to understand what you're doing today. If all your presentations is about the money you need for the future, that's not going to really be very helpful for me.
Certainly. So Commissioner Hardesty, we really do, and are asking council to consider budget dollars for the fall bump for positions. This is a critical component of what our conversation is about today.
With all due respect, Director, I was not invited to a budget conversation. I was invited to a work session to talk about the work of your bureau. We have scheduled time to talk budget. I was not invited here to talk about, because I cannot tell you today what I will support or not. So I just, I just feel that this was a very, this was not put together in a manner to give me the information I need to make decisions when we are making decisions around the budget. Just advocating, I mean, every bureau has a long list of needs, so I'm not sure how this is going to be helpful.
And having this presentation now before you begin to make those considerations related to fall bump and certainly in the next budget, I do believe is a timely conversation. And it doesn't need to be the only conversation. We can have many conversations, as many as you would like between now and then with regard to the needs of the city related to H R staff.
Well, I just want to put on the record, I'm just disappointed today. If I thought you were going to lobby me today, I would have actually excused myself from this work session. I need to know what you're not going to do anymore, what you're going to do in the future. If every presenter is going to lobby me for more money, this is really a waste of my time today.
We're trying to make a nexus also for you of the current needs and the resource challenges connected to our strategy.
Again, if it's all tied into your budget ask, you're not actually providing the information I need to make good decisions. I will be deciding budgets later, and just talking about your needs is not sufficient to the information I need to make decisions.
Commissioner Matt?
I genuinely mean this in the spirit of being constructive. I feel like Commissioner Hardesty feels like this format is not working for her, and I understand that. I have some concerns about doing another hour and a half along this route. So I'd suggest either we shorten it, or if Commissioner Hardesty has a suggestion about specifically the data that she'd like to see, or if any of my other colleagues have advice here, I'm really not trying to have a substantive debate. It feels like we got off on maybe the wrong foot. And I'm trying to see if we can salvage this either by making it quicker or focusing a little bit.
Sure.
Commissioner Hardesty, maybe I could ask you directly, is there something specific you want to see here today?
Yes, I want to know what the challenges are. Basically, I want to know what Human Resources does today. Because I know what I hear from employees is different than I'm hearing in this presentation. Employees are not feeling like they're being supported by Human Resources, and there are many reasons for that. And I'm not feeling like we're, we're being sold a presentation that's very well-presented and actually makes compelling arguments, but it doesn't answer the fundamental questions outside of the budget process. Are employees getting their needs met? And if so, how? And if not, what do we need to do to change that? You know, it's fabulous to talk about anti-blackness, but what I know is when 45% of the Black employees have left in the last five years, painting this rosy picture about what we're doing today and what we're going to do tomorrow is not helpful for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. And what I would say is that I do not believe we're meeting employees' needs right now. That is why.
I don't either, and I'd like to know what it is you're not going to do, rather than how much money you would like us to add into your budget. Have you done the analysis inside Human Resources? I know that there are programs that shouldn't exist, but they've existed for a long time. What are you doing inside to actually make Human Resources better so that we feel confident during some investment? And who knows what the investment will be? But honestly, I'm really frustrated at this moment, and it's coming out of my voice. And so I want to be very respectful, but also I don't want you to waste my time, and I don't want to waste yours.
Duly noted. I we are doing the basic human resource functions to keep us compliant with the law, to do the basic recruiting functions, to keep up with the workload. We are implementing vaccine mandates and furlough and all of the other things that have come up in the last 18 months that don't have anything to do with what we normally do. And that kind of work is going to continue. It's going to continue for a while longer. And then we have decisions to make about how hybrid work comes into the city or what it is that work does look like moving forward. So those are the things that we can do right now. I understand that there's significant amounts of change. These are the changes that we want to make. But we don't have the staff to do that because we're keeping up with the bare minimum right now.
And so Kathy, again, every bureau will give me that same song and dance. Every bureau can make a compelling case as to why they need more staff because they need more people to do X, Y, Z. The issue that we are supposedly, I thought, talking about today is what you've learned, right, in the last 18 months or so. There's been a lot of transition. And we need to right the ship, which means there's some things that you maybe are doing today that are luxury that you should not be doing. Have you done any internal assessment of programming activities that actually could be better suited elsewhere? Right? I asked this question of each bureau when I talk about adding programming. What are you doing away with? Right? Because we tend to add a lot, but we never take anything away. And so it's important for you to right-size your bureau so that your bureau actually reflects what the priorities of the city are. And I don't know that I can tell that from what I'm hearing today. Because again, you know, when people start lobbying me out of order, I tend to stop listening. But from what I've heard today, you've got great ideas, but it's not in context of where you are at this moment.
So we're not doing any work that is luxury work. We are not. We are hiring people. We are processing changes. We are sending out recruitment notices. We are doing the bare minimum as it relates to outreach. Because we have individuals that need to stop working at a certain period of time. And we don't have the staff or the capacity to do the amount of work that we need. And with these 200 jobs that are position descriptions that are being requested, bureaus are going to expect service from B H R, and we won't have staff to fulfill those needs. It will delay when they can hire, and everybody's going to be mad.
So that is a problem. That is a citywide problem. It takes forever to hire anybody at the city. Is there a plan, a proposal to streamline that process? And what would that look like? I mean, it's horrible how long it takes us to hire people. So as one example, which is a great example, how is your budget proposal going to actually streamline that and make it easier for us to actually onboard people? Hire them and get them onboard.
By having more recruiters, we will be able to have more job announcements. We would be able to go through all of the supplemental questions that are part of New Gov. We would be able to create eligible lists.
So you're telling me today you would not be able to actually bring people on any faster than you're doing right now?
Absolutely not. And in fact, it will get slower.
I, yeah, okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
So the other important, to move this along, the other important piece I think that we need to go ahead and address is pay equity. This was part of what we came and talked to you about before this session, and there are specific asks of council as it relates to pay equity now. So certainly, as far as class comp goes, it is a team, a small team to establish and maintain the city's classification and compensation structures. They work to develop, and what, so sorry. Move this back over so I can see it. The first person you're going to hear from as it relates to class comp and pay equity will be Deputy City Attorney Anne Milligan. She will provide you an overview of pay equity law as it relates to the state of Oregon. But it's also good, important to understand that class comp itself has goals. And certainly those goals are to develop transparent, equitable, and fiscally responsible compensation philosophy. Certainly something that we would bring back to council to flesh out more and have you weigh in on. Expanding pay equity compliance within council offices will also be important by the time the next study is required. And we also have opportunity and goals to concentrate how we communicate with employees and set rules, processes, and practices. So I will now turn it over to Anne Milligan to provide a brief understanding of the Oregon Pay Equity Act. And this will help set up the discussion as it relates to the analysis that was done and the findings that we have.
Thank you Kathy. As Kathy said, my name is Anne Milligan, and I am a deputy city attorney with the City Attorney's Office. I was one of the two attorneys that worked on our prior pay equity audit in 2018, culminating with the changes that we made as of January 1, 2019. And I am one of the attorneys again working on the 2021 pay equity audit. Next slide, please. So for a little bit of context, before we dive into pay equity 101, as Kathy alluded to, this is an abbreviated version of the training that I have been giving other folks around the city, managers, frontline folks all around. We've trained hundreds of people so far. I've only got 10 minutes to talk to you about content that really could be a two-hour presentation. But for a little bit of context right now, pay equity is something that is rising in the press and becoming more of an issue in terms of litigation in the state of. and becoming more of an issue in terms of litigation in the state of Oregon, partly because we've made major changes to our law here in Oregon. So folks ranging from the University of Oregon to Nike, to the Oregon Legislature, to OHSU are all facing high-profile litigation as a result of these changes and simply this moment in time where we're saying that the pay gap should not exist anymore. Bully charges, the state equivalent of the EOC, are up by one hundred and fifty-five percent. So this is something that we obviously, from a litigation perspective, as one of y'all's attorneys, I like to have on my horizon and want to keep on your horizon too, to minimize our risk profile. Next slide, please. So starting to dive down into the legal aspect itself, there are two major laws that we have to comply with. Here at City of Portland, there is a federal law and then there is a state law. The federal law, no doubt you are well acquainted with, it's been around since nineteen sixty-three. It was one of the last pieces of landmark legislation that President Kennedy signed before his assassination in early nineteen sixty-four. The Oregon Equal Pay Act, in contrast, was one of the very first pay equity laws in the entire United States and predated even the Federal Equal Pay Act. There were huge revisions that it went through in twenty seventeen, effective January first, twenty nineteen, and then a few additional legislative tweaks in twenty nineteen. We're really mainly only going to go into the, the Oregon Equal Pay Act today, but I do want to just provide a little bit of context. Next slide, please, for the Federal Equal Pay Act. So the Federal Equal Pay Act is really a product of its time, right? Nineteen sixty-three, very straightforward, very basic, not adequate by modern standards at all. And the Equal Pay Act simply requires that men and women be paid equally when they're performing equal work, right? That's that big banner that we see wherever you might go at a protest, equal pay for equal work. Should be a relatively non-controversial idea. It only prohibits wage discrimination between the sexes. And I think right now you can immediately issue spot that that's quite frankly not broad enough. There are wage gaps between more than just men and women. We have the comprehensive idea of our entire intersectional identities. And the Federal Equal Pay Act takes none of that into consideration. Another big issue with the federal EPA is that it's essentially a very high threshold for employees to meet, to show that they are really basically doing the exact same job as another employee. All forms of pay are covered by this, whether you are an hourly or a salaried employee. But there is a huge loophole. And we're going to contrast this directly with the Oregon Equal Pay Act. The huge loophole in the Federal Equal Pay Act is that employers can defend any kind of difference in wages paid between men and women who are performing the same job with any kind of good faith factor other than sex. So it's a huge loophole that's large enough to swallow essentially the entire rule. Next slide, please. The Oregon Equal Pay Act, in contrast, was specifically crafted by the Oregon Legislature in twenty seventeen to increase litigation and to close the wage gap faster over time than their statisticians were already projecting it to close. Their statisticians at the time believed that the pay gap in Oregon would not close until twenty fifty. And so they have made this dramatic expansion of law that makes our law here in Oregon by far the most expansive pay equity law in the entire United States. First things first, it expanded who was covered. Again, you remember, Federal Equal Pay Act, just the binary sexes. In contrast, Oregon's equal pay law covers all of our core protected classes. So race, gender, color, national origin, disability, marital status, veteran status, et cetera. All of those protected classes are protected from wage discrimination under the Oregon Equal Pay Act. It also expanded what it is that we compare. Under the old law, we only looked at hourly wages, salary, maybe bonuses, big compensation ideas like that. But the new law is very specific that everything can be considered to be compensation essentially, anything that could be worth money, even if it is not actual currency. So for instance, vacation time, management leave, or healthcare benefits to the extent that they're not offered to everyone uniformly. The law also just reduced the justifications for pay gaps. So again, as I previewed for you before, the Federal Equal Pay Act says employers can explain away a wage differential by any good faith factor other than sex. Now, Oregon's Equal Pay Act, somewhat controversial, only has eight specific reasons called bona fide factors that any employer is allowed to use to justify a wage differential between any of those protected classes that we've already talked about. Finally, last but not least, is the salary history question ban. And this arises out of Knight Circuit case law that has now been formally adopted and enshrined in Oregon law. We cannot ask a new incoming employee what their pay was at a prior employer until we have made a conditional offer of employment. We also can't base an incoming employee's pay off of their past pay at a prior employer. And the idea behind the salary history question ban is this, that there's no way for us to know as the new employer if that new employee was at some point in time in the past discriminated against based on their race, their color, their gender, their disability, their sexuality, et cetera. And we cannot afford to be an unintentional beneficiary of a past act of discrimination against that employee by setting their pay based on what they were paid at a prior employer. Next slide, please. So quick recap here, you can see on the left hand of this slide, we have a light blue United States with the symbols for male and female superimposed over it. So easy way to remember, the Federal Equal Pay Act just covers men versus women's pay differences between the sexes. On the right hand of the slide, you have a light blue Oregon with the various symbols for all of our core protected classes superimposed over it. So that you remember that the Oregon Equal Pay Act, in contrast, covers gender, national origin, veteran status, religion, sexuality, race, color, age to the extent that it's over eighteen, disability status, et cetera. All of our core protected classes. Next slide, please. So as a result of the Oregon Equal Pay Act, one of the big changes that they made in twenty seventeen, there is a brand-new safe harbor provision. Of course, our law is more similar to the pay equity provisions of Puerto Rico and less compared to that of Massachusetts. Massachusetts has a full, complete safe harbor provision, whereas Puerto Rico and Oregon only have partial safe harbor provisions. And we'll explain what that is. So the Oregon Equal Pay Act strongly encourages all employers of all sizes in the entire state of Oregon, public and private, to engage in an at-least triennial basis pay equity analysis, so once every three years. As a result of that major change to the law, City of Portland did in fact conduct its first-ever pay equity audit across all of those intersectional identities that we already discussed in twenty eighteen with those pay changes effective midnight, December thirty-first, twenty eighteen, going into that effective date of the new law. It's been three years and we are working on that same project again so that we can stay on this triennial basis. An equal pay analysis is often seen as kind of a big, ambiguous, confusing to some folks, but it just means it's an evaluation process to find, look at, and fix any wage gaps among employees who do work of comparable character, because that's the standard in Oregon, comparable character not equal, the lower threshold, among employees who are having dissimilar bona fide factors. And we'll get into what each of those things mean, comparable character and bona fide factors, in the coming slides. We do this for a variety of reasons. Obviously, we want to make sure that all of our employees are paid fairly consistent with their talents, their education, their experience, their seniority in the city, for instance. But we also want to be a model employer in the community. We, we think that all employers should be engaging in this work, even though it is time-consuming work. It is very human power-intensive work. It takes an extraordinary amount of time and labor to make sure this is done correctly and in a way that's ultimately defensible in a court of law. The safe harbor that this law provides us, if we do this work adequately, in line with the size of us as an employer, which is a very high burden since we are a very large employer, is that we are shielded from compensatory damages if we ever end up in court with a pay equity case. Next slide, please. So very, very quick and dirty summary. Any pay equity analysis under the Oregon law is really going to pull on two main steps. So first step, we need to locate, are there at least two non-represented city employees who are performing work of comparable character, right? Because that's the Oregon threshold for comparators under the Oregon Equal Pay Act. We only compare apples to apples, we don't compare apples to oranges, right? We're going to compare an attorney against an attorney, we're not going to compare an attorney against a paralegal. So if the answer to step one is yes, then and only then can we move on to step two. If folks are not doing work of comparable character, we do not compare them. We do not make sure that they are being paid equitably under Oregon's Equal Pay Act. It's just the comparators that we compare. So let's say we've identified at least two people who are performing work of comparable character and we can move on to step two. We are still permitted, under Oregon law, to pay those two people who are doing relatively similar work differently if it is based on one of the statutorily enumerated bona fide factors. Next slide, please. So what is work of comparable character? I really think the legislature probably could have chosen a more specific term of art than this. This is pretty ambiguous. But work of comparable character just means work that requires substantially similar knowledge, skill, effort, responsibility, and working conditions in the performance of the work regardless of the job title. Now thankfully at City, next slide, please, our classification structure provides the main framework for what is work of comparable character. And I see I lost one of my slides, that's okay. At City, basically, work of comparable character just means you're in the same classification specification and you're in the same job family at the same time. So just picture it as a Venn diagram of that job class spec overlapping with the job family. Those people in that intersection point are performing work of comparable character. So step two of the analysis is the statutory bona fide factors. Again, we've located apple number one, apple number two. We're ready to move on to the next step of the process and determine if we can pay apple one and apple two differently based on their various traits. So the traits that we're allowed to consider under the Oregon Equal Pay Act are seniority system, merit system, system measuring earnings by quantity or quality of work, workplace location, travel if it's actually necessary and regular for the job, education if it's actually relevant to the position, training if it's relevant to the position, experience, again, if it's relevant to the position, or any combination of those factors, as long as the combination accounts for the entire differential. Next slide, please. So those are the eight statutory factors that we can consider, but nothing in the law requires us to consider every single one of those bona fide factors. Not every workplace is necessarily going to reflect all eight of those factors. So for instance, system measuring earnings by quantity or quality of work, that's really traditionally an agricultural measure. And because we're not paying people by the bushel of apple, we don't need to consider that. That's not consistent with how we pay people. At City, the bona fide factors that we use in our pay equity analysis are seniority system, merit system, education, and experience. We only use four of the allowed eight bona fide factors. Next slide, please. So again, this is a very high-level summary and I'm happy to provide a training to your offices on a one-on-one basis or otherwise, if you'd like. We can do the full training at your convenience. But what comes next after we've located those folks doing work of comparable character and we've determined that maybe they have the same education, experience, seniority at City and they've gotten the same merit ratings in the past? So what do we do if we locate those two people performing work of comparable character and it appears that there's no justification under those bona fide factors for a difference in pay between the two of them? The Pay Equity Act really only provides us with two main options. We can either increase the pay of the lower-paid employee to be equal to that of the higher-paid employee or we can red circle or freeze, which just means to hold an employee's salary constant as that lower-paid person comes into alignment over time with the higher-paid employee. So with that very high-level summary of what pay equity one oh one means here in Oregon under the Oregon Equal Pay Act, I will hand it off to Tracy Warren, who's going to discuss the actual outcome of our current pay equity analysis.
Thank you, Anne. Good afternoon. My name is Tracy Warren. I'm the Classification and Compensation Manager for the city. And I'll be providing an overview of this year's pay equity study to include recommendations to move us forward. To start, we formed a partnership with the University of Southern California Race and Equity Center. The USC Race and Equity Center is a research advisory group specializing in conducting pay equity studies and other equity, diversity, and inclusion-focused work. USC Race and Equity Center helps employers across varying industries and sectors to conduct proactive, self-driven pay equity studies to determine whether any pay disparities exist within that organization. The center's expertise in analyzing qualitative data has better positioned the city to look beyond the numbers to identify root causes contributing to avoidable pay gaps. I've asked our assigned chief strategist, Rich Nazir, to join us today to provide additional context throughout the presentation if the need should arise. We began this year's pay equity study by procuring new technology. This technology enabled the statistical analysis for the study and will allow the city to compare jobs in future reviews. To conduct the analysis, we created a job framework to group non-represented positions into job families. This helped us to better compare the work. We then conducted a statistical analysis of the employees' pay using an accepted standard statistical model. We use this model to help inform our recommendations for correcting pay gaps and sustaining pay equity over time. Let's take a look at our preliminary findings of this year's study. Before we jump in, I'd like to first acknowledge and mention that the slide, the numbers on this slide are a little bit different than the numbers that were provided in the background documentation that you received. This is because we are continuing our work to validate the data and this is just preliminary. This slide shows the employee overview and helps us to see how many of our non-represented employees fall outside of the standard for their predicted pay and the cost to bring those employees up to the standard using statistically significant variables. The standard is the number found to be statistically significant and meaningful. The good news is ninety-six point nine percent of the employee group fell within the statistically identified standard for their predicted pay. They are paid as we would expect according to the standard. And we are not recommending changes to that group of employees. The two point five percent of...
Excuse me, if I can ask a question here? Does that mean that since twenty eighteen, when the first study was done, and twenty nineteen, when it was implemented, that we have created a gap now at two point five percent as far as pay equity is concerned? Did we think we were even in twenty nineteen?
So the, the Commissioner Hardesty, to, to answer your question, we have sustained a pretty low pay gap. It is not uncommon for organizations to have a continued pay gap.
Okay.
Year over year, it takes, it takes changes to practices and policies to ensure that we kind of close that gap in continual audits that happen on a more regular and consistent basis.
Thank you for that, Tracy. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is I remember that there was a lot of employee angst when some employees' salaries were kind of frozen and some employees got a minimal kind of pay raise. And now here we are going to second go around. I guess what's going to be different this time that, from the first time around that we did it?
Yeah, so some of the things that are different this time around are the, the use of the technology, the collaboration with city leadership, the conversation.
the conversations and training and education that was provided to city staff regarding the pay equity study and the pay equity project. In addition, what is different is that we have a much smaller number that are, we are looking to correct. So I'll talk about it.
Okay, I have one more question, and you may be gonna say it, and I'll just be quiet and wait till you get to it. But can you tell me what bureaus these employees work in? Or is there a preponderance in one bureau versus another?
That's something that I'd like to follow up with the commissioners and mayor separately in one-on-one conversations, once we've had an opportunity to further validate and investigate the data, which is a secondary process to this preliminary review. Thank you. So the two point five percent of non-represented employees are outside the standard for their predicted pay and paid less than expected. We recommend correcting these employees' pay. This percentage represents forty-three employees out of the one thousand seven hundred and two total non-represented employees that were in scope of the pay equity study. The point six percent, or ten employees in yellow to the right, are above their standard or paid more than the expected. We are not recommending any action for those group of employees. The point seven percent, or twelve employees, and the one point eight percent, or thirty-one employees to the left, show the forty-three employees or the two point five percent that is referenced on the visual. These employees are below the standard, and it also shows how much they are below the standard. This is a significantly no, lower number of employees in comparison to the city's first equal pay audit. The last time around, we had roughly five hundred employees who received wage corrections as a result of the pay equity study. So in comparison, we are looking at a number of forty-three. We wanted to do, we will do additional work to validate the data by reviewing employee records prior to making changes, but wanted to adequately prepare council for any potential budgetary impacts. So we're gonna take a little bit of a deeper look at the demographics of those who participated or were participants in the study and those that we're looking to correct. So the pie chart on the left represents the non-represented employees included in the study, which is a total of one thousand seven hundred and two employees. The pie chart to the right represents the small group of forty-three employees or the two point five percent that are outside the statistically set standard. We are recommending the correction of pay for these individuals. Pie charts are set up similarly to the last slide in that we are showing the percentage of male and female employees within the study to the left, and to the right, you're showing the forty-three employees to be corrected and their gender. As you can see, this chart demonstrates a similar percentage of males and females in the larger study group as the subgroup of the forty-three employees we are recommending to be corrected. I'd like to take a moment to discuss some recommendations for pay equity and how we might move forward. So first, we recommend council set aside up to three hundred and thirty thousand of general fund resources to cover, to cover current year costs. Second, while the city made proactive pay adjustments in the two thousand eighteen pay equity study, we have also found structural and process issues that need correction. The requested resource will provide project leadership towards correcting these issues and will help us to sustain pay equity going forward. Lastly, the pay equity analysis administered by VHR includes a small subset of our workforce. We request council support to bring more of our workforce into the program by dedicating resources proactively to plan, develop, and sustain pay equity that is inclusive of all city employees. Our current staffing does not allow us that ability. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this with you today, and I'd like to open it up for any remaining questions that the council may have before passing it off to Director Blass to finalize next steps.
And if I may, why, why do you want to do this with all employees? Employees that are represented by unions don't have the same pay equity issues that employees that are not represented by unions have.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartzie. There are actually some represented employees that we are currently conducting pay equity ongoing reviews for because of their already agreed-to contractual language. And so we'd like to be proactive and work with our labor partners to identify better ways of conducting pay equity reviews for those employees. In addition, we have received feedback from bureau leadership that they would like to be able to offer employees coming into the city, coming into city employment above entry wages. One of the ways that we are able to maintain compliance with pay equity law for our represented employees is because we offer everyone the same amount of salary when they come in the door regardless of their knowledge, skills, and abilities that they're bringing to the organization. As you can imagine, if you are somebody who is looking to make a change and, and move over into a new organization, you may have challenges with an entry salary. And so one of the ways that we would be able to support bureaus in their request is by planning ahead proactively, working with our labor partners to discuss the best way to move forward for pay equity with that group of people. Did I answer your question, Commissioner Hartzie? Thank you. And then I see a couple more hands, Mayor Wheeler, did you have a question?
Yeah, just to follow up on the, the request you made a moment ago, I think it was three hundred and fifty thousand. Can, can you confirm that is, just to be clear, what that is? That is one-time only to complete a study, is that correct? What is it?
No, so the three hundred and thirty thousand is a set aside of general resources to close the pay gap for those forty-three employees to cover this year's costs.
Yeah, but to be clear, that's an ongoing cost, that's not a one-time-only expenditure.
That is correct, there would be an ongoing cost.
So why are you asking for one-time-only money for what's a known ongoing expenditure?
I'm asking for the one-time money to be part of the fall bump so that we can cover this year's cost, and then we will return with additional conversations for the fiscal year for ongoing.
What is our obligation to cover this year's cost as opposed to taking this up as part of the next budget process?
Mayor Wheeler, I did ask Jessica Knard if she could be present in this conversation so that she could provide additional feedback about potential budget impacts and how we might cover that.
Yeah.
Jessica, are you available to?
Yes, yeah, thanks Tracy, and thanks Mayor for the question. So I think that, that this is, as Tracy mentioned, these are the preliminary estimates. And so I too would be interested in seeing sort of the bureau-by-bureau look and confirming the impact to different bureaus. Once we have more complete information, we can provide guidance to you all about what the anticipated impacts are to each bureau and to each fund. And then from there, the decision to the council would be, do you want to make bureaus whole by appropriating resources for, for this additional cost that they're incurring? Or do you want to presume that the bureaus will be able to absorb those costs internally within those budgets? And you'll make that decision first on the current year costs, and you can make that as part of the fall or as part of the spring bump. And then next spring, you'll make that decision as well on an ongoing basis when you...
So Director Knard, can I just make, and I hate to be dumb, but it's been a long day and a long week. There is no cost incurred yet, is there?
Correct, this cost would begin, yes, the cost would begin to be incurred on, I believe, that January one. And so we would just want to be sure that money was available in contingency in the current year after January one. So not appropriating money right now.
So what you're asking for is January one through June thirtieth. What, what triggers the expenditure on January first? Is this a legal obligation? Is, what, what is the commitment we've made? Why can't we just start this on July first, twenty twenty-two, as the first day of the next fiscal year, having considered this through the budget process and the impact on all of our bureaus?
I think that is a legal or operational question that I would defer to Anne or Tracy on.
Okay.
Thank you, Jessica. Mayor Wheeler, the, the reason for the January first date has to do with the safe harbor that Anne discussed previously. So in order to, in order to have that safe harbor, we have to implement by January first of twenty twenty-two, which is a three-year time period from the first implementation.
January first, twenty twenty-two, being six months into, I mean, that is effectively the second half of this fiscal year. I assume that the safe harbor also implodes if we choose not to fund it more than those six months, is that correct?
So we have to behave in a way total, from a totality perspective, that is reasonable in detail and scope in light of the size and resources of the employer, which is an ambiguous, flexible standard. We have always approached this in a way that this work has to be one hundred percent complete and our so-called debt's paid by that three-year mark because there is no current case law that is published guiding us on this relatively new law that again, just went into effect January first, twenty nineteen.
And what are the consequences of not establishing the safe harbor and waiting for the budget process until we can review this holistically with all of our bureaus? What, what is the risk, what's the downside risk?
We lose the safe harbor, so we lose the shield from compensatory damages.
Anne?
And moreover, I would point out too, that this is, what's being proposed is, is already a middle-of-the-road proposal because technically, any kind of wage gap retroactively would also be due and owing. And we're not talking about paying any kind of retroactive wages owed. We're only talking about it effective January first of the coming year.
What is the consequence of funding one set? I mean, if, if, yeah, let's, let's just humor us all for a moment, decide we agree to do this in the fall bump. Effectively, we've committed to ongoing resources during the fall bump, which is frankly not the policy that's established by council for the fall bump. So we would sort of game it by saying, oh, it's this one-time only, but legally, we're really obligated at that point. What is the full commitment we would be making as a result of making that incremental commitment in the fall bump specific to other bureaus beyond what we've discussed? What, what have we just obligated ourselves to in terms of broader expenditures on an ongoing basis?
That sounds like a Jessica question.
So, and I, I would look for Tracy to confirm this, but my understanding is that this preliminary estimate of three hundred and thirty-one thousand is the citywide cost estimate.
So that's, that's the bracket, and going forward, it would be an ongoing three hundred and fifty thousand, and that is it?
At the most, is that correct, Tracy?
It's correct.
Or I mean...
You would basically be increasing wages to that mark, those personnel expenses by three hundred and fifty K. So that would carry forward, and then, you know, colas, merits, things like that would compound that over time.
All right, thank you.
And, and so I would just highlight again, the, the operational decision that, that Anne is talking about is whether or not to increase wages effectively January one. It is a separate but very much connected question as to whether or not council wants to give bureaus money to pay for those pay, those pay increases. Because it is always a choice for council to require bureaus to absorb those costs. So that's why the additional information around how much money is hitting which bureaus and which funds will be really helpful in making the allocation decision.
Okay, one, one, one last question, thank you, that's helpful, one last question, Director. Was this one of the...
This is something I have been keeping my eye on.
So was this built into the assumption around the fall bump resources?
This is something that I have been thinking about and been talking about with you and other members of council in my briefings.
Okay, so it is, it has effectively been accounted for in the manner you and I have been discussing with regard to set asides.
That's correct.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you, I appreciate it, thanks for answering my questions.
Thank you, and then Commissioner Max, I see you have your hands up.
Yeah, a couple of just background questions, so I understand what's going on. Currently, how many people do we have working in plant, class comp right now?
We currently have... I'm counting stuff, and we have five.
Five. And as part of, in addition to the three hundred and thirty-one thousand that you're asking for, for class comp issues, you're asking for three new positions in class comp, this is the same work group?
It is the same work group, but, but the, the ask that Director Blass talked about in the beginning are to cover current workload demands. What you see in front of you as part of the recommendations are for consideration for resources in the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three to support pay equity specifically in the recommendations that we're outlining to kind of close those gaps by improving our system.
Sure, and I understand that, and I appreciate the, that clarification. It just seems like this is the point in the presentation where I should ask why the request for three new class comp recruiters comes in the fall bump as opposed to the regular budget process? To me, the, the class comp stuff seems like work that we, you know, we do all the time. It's very important work, we're mandated to do it, and we want to do it. But it seemed, it doesn't seem to be like an act of God or a pandemic response. Whereas I can kind of see why we might want to do the recruiters because of, you know, some very immediate challenges or mental health person, because of immediate challenges. The class comp position strikes me as being something which kind of naturally fits with the regular fall budget or whatever the rest of the budget's gonna be.
So Tracy, let me, let me first take, take that one. There is a nexus related to, to the pandemic certainly, and part of bureaus recoveries. And so the position, the new work that is, that is acute, right? That we are asking for fall bump resources is directly related to these two hundred new positions that need to be created in the system, and classification structures need to be set up for, for those. And then they need to get processed within our organization management system as part of strategic operations. Normally, we do two hundred of those in a year, and we're getting two hundred requests within the fall bump. So there's an acute need right now to help address what we cannot do within the resources that we have available to us. We, and so these are one-time limited-duration funds because it's an acute need. I fully expect that if we were to come back and ask for ongoing requests to absorb or, or to ensure that we had ongoing resources, we would have some additional reasons to be, be able to come back to council and talk to you about. I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, I think it is, so ongoing, do you expect to need, I think it adds up to eight fast comp folks?
So part of the discussion also with council is to understand the perspectives related to ensuring that we have opportunity to fix what we also believe is, needs to change, which is the very wide pay bands in our compensation structure. That would require an additional person, but that's an ongoing need conversation that would, that would be part of the next budget process. As well as, and I, and I think that there's divergent opinions amongst council as it relates to who to bring into the pay equity study as which employee groups. And so should council want to move forward with that kind of piece? That's also a new body of work that would require additional ongoing resources to manage. So that's where those, the ongoing pieces are articulated for you today.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Hardesty.
Trying to get to my hand raise again, but my little cursor I couldn't find. I actually had a question about the recruitment. You want two positions to hire for the police? Don't the police already have their own recruitment division?
They do not. It was cut as part of their budget process. So their recruitment manager and their recruiters, they don't have any. And so the functions as it relates to outreach, recruitment are all functions that are now part of BHR.
When did that happen? You become responsible for recruiting police?
At the beginning of the first budget cuts with police, so end of twenty twenty twenty.
The three programs that had absolutely nothing to do with what we're talking about, when those programs were cut, recruitment you took on, is that what you're saying? When we cut these, those discriminatory programs within the police bureau, when we cut fifteen million?
No, no, I think that the police bureau made decisions to cut their recruitment functions at some juncture in response to budget cuts that council directed.
And does the human resource have any expertise in recruiting police officers?
So Ashley, I'll let you go ahead and speak to are the recruitment strategies related to police?
Certainly. Thank you, Kathy, and good afternoon, Commissioners and Mayor. In relation to your question, Commissioner Hardesty, yes, the Bureau of Human Resources has historically provided support to the police bureau and the recruitment team that was previously funded within the police bureau. We've provided support through the function of a recruitment analyst or recruiter providing the process support as well as attending some local events as it pertains to recruitment and outreach along with that recruitment team. I think what's important to note here is there were three people along with the BHR recruiter who also provided support to other bureaus. And now all of that work has rolled into the Bureau of Human Resources and an already stretched team.
Thank you. That is, that's helpful because I didn't see the connection between the two, but that is very helpful, Ashley. Thank you.
Most certainly. And also, Commissioner Hardesty, if I may provide some information as it relates to data regarding the efficiency of our processes in relation to recruitment in directly tying back to a question that you raised previously. I wanted to draw attention to our HR recruitment analytics. There is a dashboard that is typically updated monthly. It's currently postponed due to reporting related to the vaccine mandate. However, based upon that dashboard, in fiscal year sixteen, our time to hire was a hundred and eleven, one hundred and eleven days in fiscal year sixteen. We were able to work with council and add additional recruitment positions for fiscal year seventeen. We then saw a downward trend in fiscal year seventeen of ninety-nine days, fiscal year eighteen, ninety-seven days, fiscal year nineteen, eighty-five days. And then in fiscal year twenty, we reached eighty-one days, which is below the public sector average of recruitment, which is a hundred and nineteen days. Now, within fiscal year twenty-two, to date, we're back up to a hundred and four, three-digit numbers. And we do anticipate that we'll see an increase of requisition or new recruitment volume, as we've alluded to throughout today. So I do want to draw attention to, there is data to support by expanding the capacity by people resources, that we've made good use of those resources in improving the efficiency and experience in recruiting.
Thank you for that. I remember when I arrived in twenty nineteen and we had ten director positions open. I thought it was going to pull every hair out of my head. So I, thank you. That is helpful. What else was I going to say? No, I thank you, Ashley. That is helpful information. I'm good.
Any other questions related to any of the previous information or resource asks?
So again, I would have been much more open had we actually talked about where you are at the moment, what you've learned from all the exodus of city employees. I hope next time we actually have the policy conversation before we start jumping into the money needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. I certainly think that all of the policy questions are incredibly important and valuable conversations to have. And I know that the city's African-American network is coming to provide feedback to all of council on October twenty-sixth with regard to policy decisions as well. We needed to be able to come before council to talk about the acute needs of staffing and and wanted to be respectful of the process that you had put in place within the budget. So I understand the ask and we're certainly happy to meet with you to continue that conversation.
All right, any other questions? Are we complete? Have you completed everything you wanted to convey to us, Director Bless?
Yes.
Colleagues, anything else for the good of the order? All right, good discussion. Thank you all. We are adjourned. Thank you.